Okay.
Well, well, thank you for that information. Okay, nice.
Yeah.
Got banged in my knee going out. Oh, yeah.
Oh, really? Oh, gosh. Sorry about that.
Tree, not tree now.
It said tree one, Joe zero.
Tree two.
Wow.
Briefing.
And I just missed it. I want to get it for two hot.
Okay. Sir.
All right, at this point, Mr. We're waiting on Mr. Hager, but we will get started with our briefing session beginning at six o'clock P. M. And with that, we'll get right into discussing agenda items. Mr. City Manager, do you have some introductions you want to make?
Yeah, we do have Assistant City Manager Abernathy and Assistant City Manager Crasher both here at the table, but I will introduce them a little bit more formally in the in the other room like it up there.
I feel complete.
It's a fun table, right? Well, we need the city attorney, but it's almost a fun table, so.
He would have called me up if you know. Okay, so discuss the agenda items.
Jumping into the consent agenda, so the first one is for A, let's pause for a second because there's quite a list of, usually skip over that, but I don't know if everybody gets anything on that.
Anybody get a chance to look at the minutes and have any questions, concerns, changes?
All right, for B, consider a resolution supporting the City of Duncanville's applications to the Texas Department of Transportation's twenty twenty five transportation alternative set aside call for projects. And we have our Public Works Director Matt Bryan, Assistant Public Works Director Shahab Mohammed help answer any questions. They've been out shaking the trees, trying to shoot the money trees for grant funding for us, so.
Twenty twenty eight is what it's all for the back of my mind for the twenty twenty eight start date.
That is the one for the sidewalks for the twenty twenty eight construction, if it's a working.
Construction, yeah, because we would we would have the we would we would be able to know about the award hopefully in full. But the money won't be by the time we do the AFA and complete the process, it could be twenty seven. And then we start the design, so the construction is twenty eight.
Thank you.
For C, consider a resolution awarding RFP twenty four dash zero zero two zero on demand citywide plumbing services to one source plumbing in air TV industries through the city's competitive proposals process for plumbing services for a one year term with a renewal option for three additional one year terms in an estimated contract not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars over four years across both vendors, subject to city council appropriation. And Public Works Director Matt Bryan is here to help answer your questions.
No questions.
For D, consider a resolution awarding RFP twenty five zero zero one two to elite striping for pavement marking services through the city's competitive proposals process for a three year term with renewal option for three additional one year terms in an estimated contract amount not to exceed one six hundred eighty one thousand eight hundred sixty one dollars over six years, subject to city council appropriation. Public Works Director Matt Bryan and Assistant Director Shahab Mohammed are here to help answer any questions.
This one, are you referring to?
So, thank you, Mayor. So I was having a conversation with Mayor a little bit earlier today about this, and I've had a series of conversations with the Assistant City Managers as well as Public Works today. There are some, what I would say, other programs, maybe some funding opportunities for us to look at in the future that may be that may help with how all of this much money having to hit the the general fund for the future. So I think that that's an option for the future. We've also been having quite a conversation about buttons that you see on the streets in the City of Duncanville versus stripes in a lot of other communities. Stripes are less expensive than the buttons, but buttons last longer. There's some pros and cons to both, to be quite honest. One of the big aspects for striping, in my experience, is that you can really look at traffic calming, reducing travel lanes a little bit when it comes to that, slowing vehicles down, that sort of thing. Now, what Public Works is telling me is that they really need the authorization for this for this to move forward with projects that are coming up in the pipeline right now. But I do think, especially as we finish up the comprehensive plan, we look at zoning changes, that this comes back to council for council to give some direction on what you would like to see on the city streets. Are you interested in doing more traffic calming measures like what we talked about with the complete streets and those types of things? Are, you know, some areas it may be appropriate for buttons versus stripes? And we've also talked about really the need for design standards of some of our streets. Neighborhood streets are different than weed land or different than obviously sixty seven or twenty and stuff. And so there's some different things to take into account. We're not going to be able to solve all that tonight, obviously, but it's probably warrants some additional conversation and get Mayor's thinking in the future about that. For D, consider a resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty four twenty five and fiscal year twenty five twenty six arts funding policy grant guidelines as recommended by the Duncanville Arts Commission, Commission, I'm sorry. And the I O Alex Ambio has been working very hard on this and here to help answer any questions.
You're off the hook.
Thank you. For F, consider a resolution authorizing Toto Verde to install fiber optic cable between Fire Station One and Parks and Recreation Building interlocal purchasing systems contracted an estimated expenditure amount of forty three thousand one hundred ninety five dollars. And Elton is here to help answer any questions. Our procurement, oh, Clayton is here. Clayton's standing right there. Clayton's here to help answer any questions, our I T director, I should say, so.
Okay, so we referred to Fire Station One and the Parks and Recreation Building. Are we talking one one of the same?
So it's running the line from the old fire station to the new fire station.
Is it? Oh, okay. I realize it's under the fifty thousand dollars, but we already spent more than fifty thousand with Toto Verde, so this is an excess of that, what we already spent. We did send this out to competitive bid, and they were the cheapest of the three bids as well, so.
Least expensive.
The least expensive.
The better value.
It's answering your your question. The Parks and Rec headquarters, this way it was termed inside the past, and I'm like, headquarters.
Mayor, I do have I do have a question.
Sure. This is September, I think.
So, you know, I know that's going to probably be a temporary headquarters in that in that line, so. So, I mean, what's the what's the I T view or there? I mean, they they obviously have some I T working there, so why is why is the main reason for the tie in?
The tie in, they they have an internet connection, their own internet circuit provided by E T N T. They don't get some of the city services into some of our city servers directly. We don't have our camera system and access control tied in directly. This will allow us to, they're essentially in the city to all the resources. Additionally, we will still maintain that E T N T connection, but it will be a failover in case we lose internet connection here at the data center. We will automatically fail over to their internet line. And the reason we're doing that is because it's also our E O C. So if something were to happen citywide and we're in the E O C for an emergency, we have dedicated separate from the city if necessary. And you make a good point between the Parks Building may be a temporary solution, so we have run this cable to where if we do sell that building or do something different with that building, the city does not occupy it. We will still maintain this connection outside of the building away from the Parks Building. We can we can essentially sell it and still maintain that connection back here. So we've engineered it that way.
Clayton, you said they, but really just for clarification for everybody, the purpose of this is really to get the internet and the the network to the new fire station. That's what is actually.
That is the key, yeah. New fire station, getting connectivity with the rest of the city facilities.
And it was about a hundred foot slack on both ends for the fiber connection? So it was a hundred foot slack just in case it needed to extend a little further?
Yeah, yeah, in the box, there's like a handhold in the box. And so in case there, you know, scrolls or someone hits a pole or something, we have the slacks already there. We don't have to pull.
Call them back out.
Exactly.
The next item, for G, consider a resolution adopting the rules of procedure. This is your annual, this is your organizational meeting, by the way. Everybody knows that, I know, but so this is the annual adoption of the rules of procedure.
On that, just a note and request, there's there's a little bit in there about police commissions, and I'd like, of course, to look at the code of conduct and rules of procedures for that. I don't know that we've done that. I'd like to take a look at in the future. Yes, sir.
Mr. Kinnon, you were just talking about having a future conversation about that, not tonight.
Correct, yes.
All right, and then the final one, for H, consider a resolution readopting or affirming the policies approved by city council. This includes policies related to fund out, budget development, investment, TikTok, social media, police streets, conservation, funding, cost of living adjustments. I have requested that this come on here and, you know, in the future, maybe we look at including these policies as part of your either rules of procedures, just an annual reflection and affirmation of those, or maybe there's another way to do it. But again, it's just, these are all the policies that we've been working on this past year. Technically, this is a new council, so it's the reaffirmation of those policies. And I know that Mr. Jackson is still working on a couple of more to bring to you, so we want to get those once we're done with all those, kind of all of them moved together, so that we have all those.
I get an explanation from the city attorney about this, and I understand what what you're doing, just as far as readopting a resolution to readopt policies that we've already adopted.
It's just an affirmation, it's not.
So even if we didn't do this, those policies.
They're still on the facts while they're repealed.
So it's not necessary that we do this.
I don't believe legal.
But I do understand why.
It serves as a refresher.
Okay.
Concludes the.
Okay, move on to item two, City Council, Council.
Thank you, ma'am. For the June calendar, on June fifth, we have a Z B A meeting at seven P. M. On June ninth, we have the P and Z meeting at seven in council chambers. We I have a question mark on boards and commissions for interviews for D C E D C and T I P board on June the tenth. After polling council, June tenth does work for everyone. Only thing is the meeting would have to start at six, at six or six thirty at the earliest. Councilmember Coons can't be here till six thirty. And currently, we have about ten interviews for both boards.
You have two hours.
Yes, it'll be three. Okay. Okay, so we'll do six o'clock on the on the tenth for D C E D C, and that's to fill the vacancies. Okay. And also on June the thirteenth, the thirteenth is the Juneteenth welcome reception, June fourteenth, and that's in De Soto. June fourteenth is the Best Southwest Juneteenth Celebration at six in De Soto at Grimes Park. On June nineteenth is the Juneteenth holiday, so city city offices will be closed that day. On twenty on the twenty, and also on June seventeen, the next council meeting, if council would like to have new council photos, let me know what you group photos. I like taking photos. I'm not opposed to it. And I'm asking because it's the same council as last year.
Can we just Photoshop? So how many want to do new photos?
Okay.
I would do the photo.
So I can come up and do our individual.
We do have a photographer coming on the seventeenth. If you would like new photos, just your own personal photo. If you like a new one, she can take one that day before the council meeting. They will start at four o'clock, so just let me know so I know how many people she'll be photographing.
Okay, so right now, for the record, we have two.
Two, okay.
Continue to use the the.
The current.
Oh, the current group photo.
Okay.
Yeah, it keeps me to your younger.
Thank you. On June twenty sixth, we have the preliminary budget workshop, and Ms. Ovi asked me to poll council to see if three o'clock, if we could do that at three o'clock or or four o'clock.
Four o'clock would probably work best for me. We also have the council retreat on the twenty seventh.
Correct. Nine to one.
Nine to one. We're doing the twenty sixth starts at four.
Four o'clock.
And what's that going to run to?
The last one lasted about an hour and a half.
I think that this one, there may be some more questions relative to this, a couple.
Couple hours, okay.
I have a lot of city related meetings, Zoom meetings at seven o'clock, so it should be done.
And the council retreat at the Hill Garden Inn on June twenty seventh. And that will say eight thirty to one, so breakfast is at. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Well, eight thirty will be breakfast, but it'll start at nine.
All right, thank you for that. We'll cover this in the next session.
Are we having coffee? I'm sorry, coffee with the mayor?
Yes, coffee with the mayor on the twenty sixth.
At noon.
Is it on the website?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to item three, briefings, presentations. City Manager, you want to go ahead? There's no questions in the presentation.
Sure, so the first one, a briefing presentation on the current City of Duncanville alarm system ordinance. And actually, we have Chief Caneli and Chief Stocker. This came as a result of some questions. I know that some of you had received about residents getting an annual bill for permit for the alarm seat, so.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, I realize I don't have a microphone, so I can speak so loud. So as Mr. Finch said, this is essentially just a high level view of our ordinance. Ultimately, how we started this, back in two thousand and three, we adopted this. The reason why we adopted it is the legislation changed. The what happened is, I believe it was Governor Perry at the time enacting legislation that allows municipalities to enforce false alarms. A, because a lot of these alarms needed to be modernized, but two, just because of the the stress and the burden that it gives us responding to continuous false alarms. And I'll tell you, when this first was adopted to high school, was our biggest violator. And we would respond every time, especially if you, so if you have an open door at high school, well, then you have to search that entire building to ensure no one's in it. So that takes hours at that point. And a lot of times, it was, I'd say, ninety nine percent of the time, it was a false alarm. So what this ordinance required is anyone with a monitored alarm, I mean, has to, whether it's residential or or commercial, has to apply for alarm permit. Now, we don't have the staff, the appropriate staff, to have somebody specifically assigned to deal with alarm permits, false alarms, things of that nature. So we contract with Central Square, and it's a subsidiary of Central Square. It's called Cry Wolf. Cry Wolf does all of this. So, and now there has to be communication between us and them, obviously. So our annual alarm permit fee is thirty five dollars for both residential and commercial. We'll get into a little bit of that here in a minute. But they must register the alarm within sixty days of installation, or if it's a rental house or a new homeowner, they have to register it within that timeframe. They are not transferable, and you're allowed free within a twelve month period. So it doesn't go by calendar year. It's the day that you sign up for your permit, that's that calendar year, essentially. That's the year that it starts. So the types of alarms that we require registration from is burglar alarm, fire alarm, robbery alarm, panic alarm, local alarm, emergency medical alarm. Now, there's a difference. I think a lot of us in this room probably have these Ring cameras or some other form of, and you probably don't have an alarm company monitoring your residents. That's the difference. So an alarm transmits something. So an alarm transmits something to the alarm company, and the alarm company then attempts two calls to the residents before they then contact dispatch. So when you think about Ring in this, it's totally separate. So if you are watching your Ring camera and you see somebody at your house, you physically are now calling us, you're not calling a third party to make that call, so you're not having to register these Ring alarms. So in 2016, it was amended. Obviously, we have our false alarm charge, so, and we'll, I have a table a little bit later, so you don't have to read all of this, it, it makes it a little easier to, to digest, but ultimately, the $500 fee are violation. So let's say you have an unregistered alarm, well, you're in violation if we respond to it, and it's up to $500. So as I said, we contract with Central Square, they do a billing, processing false alarms, they mail information. We just signed a five-year contract with them back in January to, to help us monitor this. So as of April 14th, there's 3,200 registered alarm permits in the city. You mind passing that around, and we'll get into that in a second. So the table below it, active alarm, soon to expire, we have 285 commercial and 15 residential, and then going through, I'm not going to read all of this to you guys, it, it's there. So obviously, when they renew, they don't renew to us, they renew, they use a link and they renew with Cry Wolf and Central Square. Now, in that contract, of course, they have to get their pound of flesh, and they get 19%, and we are now getting to 81%. So that's where they get their, their money, we don't pay them a monthly service, none of that, and it comes from these fees. So our call history year-to-date, we, the police department, has responded to 573. And again, I'm not going to read all of this, but the main thing is 1,600 alarms. That's 1,600 times that we could be doing something else. And I'm not saying all of these alarms were false, but it's a lot of alarms. In addition to that, the fire department, they're responding to 554, and if it's a fire alarm, I'm assuming both stations respond to it.
Intention.
But you're talking about engines, big equipment, and now you're putting those engines because they're running lights and sirens, maybe an accident occurs. So there's a lot of things that could happen on false alarms, so we're trying to mitigate it as much as we can through this ordinance. So here's the permit fees, so Duncanville, us, ours is a flat $35, whereas De Soto and Cedar Hill, they have a difference if it's a commercial property or if it's a residential property. Now, you'll see the false alarm fees, they're actually on the next slide too, so I'm going to jump a slide. So our false alarm fees, they're all in line with each other, with all of our partners. Now, here's the difference, De Soto, they find a business $100 on a robbery alarm, which I think is great, because when we respond to a robbery alarm, we can't assume that it's a fake alarm. So we are running lights and sirens to that location, and it's pretty much everybody who's in a squad car and CID is on days, we'll go, things of that nature, so you are pulling a lot of resources, and a lot of times they're false. Currently, that's what they were paying. So Cedar Hill has a $250 non-permitted license fee. Again, if they respond and the, the alarm isn't permitted, that's what they charge. And Cedar Hill also has an exclusion of an alarm, which means that the resident can say, hey, listen, I don't want you guys to respond, I'm not paying, this is simply to hopefully deter them once the siren goes off. So that's what Cedar Hill has as well. So my recommendations is increase the permit fees for commercial businesses to $100 per calendar year, and separate and increase the false alarm for any robbery alarm to $150 per occurrence, with an increasing $50 for each false alarm in a calendar year. That's. Is it this one?
Yes.
Absolutely. So again, robbery alarms take all of our resources. Once they come out, they'll tone it out on our radio, so you know what's going on. They shut down the radio to our city, the other two cities will have to move to another channel. If it happens to their city, we move to another channel, so it affects our Best Southwest when something like this goes on. The difference, want to make sure you guys understand the clear difference of this. A robbery alarm, a person has to activate it. We have buttons, that's a panic alarm, it's similar to a robbery alarm. Residential alarm, it could be weather-related, things of that nature. Robbery alarm has to be activated by somebody, so it's intentional, and it may be reckless, but they have to be held accountable, or they'll continue to do it, and will continue to use resources to respond to it.
So do you find a significant number of those are just absolutely false alarms, something technical within the, that particular alarm system?
It could be, that's a great question, it could be, the onus is on the owner of that business or residence to have the alarm committee come out if it is something erroneous to fix. And that does state that in our.
Who makes the determination that it is false, a false alarm?
We do when we respond. Now.
So is we the person that's the one in charge there?
Yes, so ultimately, what happens, when we respond to a robbery alarm, we'll surround the location, I'm not going to give up a lot of things, but we'll communicate through dispatch to a responsible person in the, in the business or resident. They'll come out to us, we'll never go in. Now, there's times when we may have some people go in, depending on what it is, but we have communication with the manager or somebody, a responsible person in that business.
So I can attest that it works, my alarm people actually had done mine one time, and they left, and I was out by my pool, and I looked up at all these police officers, and they were like this, are you okay?
It's probably a panic alarm.
Yeah, yeah. But it was great because they were thinking I was in harm's way, and they're trying to get me, are you?
Absolutely.
I was like, I have no idea what's going on, ma'am, you're panicked, it works.
Yes, ma'am.
So it was a citizen, District 5, who reached out in March about the alarm fee, so thank you for bringing this to the agenda, so we can discuss it. The concern was, it said, false alarm reduction program, and it was a $35 fee. It's not the amount that, but it's the fact that it stated false alarm, and this resident didn't have any false alarms of record, and didn't understand why they were being charged a false alarm fee, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that, that's. It, it could be.
But it's titled wrong, so if, if the alarm fee is for having the alarm, which I get.
Right.
And why we do it, because you have to pay the third party. Then is there a way that they can go in and make sure it is titled correctly, so it's not saying false alarm fee? Because if I get something that says false alarm fee, and I don't have a false alarm ever, then rather $35 or not, I would question it.
Absolutely, of course.
Was that confirmed, that, that was posted incorrectly?
If, query regarding the city ordinance, annual required fee of $35 Duncanville resident to Duncanville False Alarm Reduction Program is what it's called.
So I think that what that is, is essentially what we're trying to do is reduce our false alarms. So maybe our program may be called something that's bad instead of saying, hey, it's just a permit.
That, that's, that's Cry Wolf.
Right.
Yeah, that's them titling it, so is there a way we can communicate to them?
Absolutely.
I've seen, I've seen these before several times, and it's like, oh, wait a minute, and you call them, they'll straighten out. That's, that's, that's the third party doing, doing it, not, not the city.
Right, so can we contact the third party and have them to report it accurately? So it's understood with citizens?
Of course, we'll have that conversation with them.
And if they have the alarm, then it is just $35 for the fee of having the alarm?
Yes, and what I'll do is I'll have them send me the information that they send out, so I can confirm everything's done, absolutely.
Would you follow up with me?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely, I'll send it to you.
Okay, perfect.
Can I borrow one of these cards real quick? Are you guys, so when we respond to an alarm, we give them this. So Ms. Trevino's our alarm coordinator, that's one of her duties. So on the back, it provides them information, the calls for service, when we respond, and, and a QR code to go to our website to figure out, and it provides people information on how to reduce these false alarms. So this is also important, if this isn't in the call sheet, that we provided them this, then it, it negates our ability to find them for the three or more false alarms. So they do receive this on their door, there you go, sir, thank you.
Okay, one more question, then we need to move on, because we have two more presentations and an executive session, we want to get in.
My quick question really is that, how does he know who was signed up for alarms?
So Stacy received that information from Cry Wolf.
Okay, how does Cry Wolf know?
Through the permitting. So when they obtain a permit, they have it for that calendar year. And any false alarms, so ultimately, our CAD and their backend, their computer system's supposed to integrate, but it doesn't. It will once we get Tyler, so then there's not going to be a lot of communication, because Cry Wolf will be able to pull that information from our CAD immediately without us having to communicate with them. Of course.
Anything else? All right, let's move on to item B.
So the next one, City Council received a briefing on the pavement condition collection inventory, discuss information, provide direction if necessary, and Assistant Public Works Director Shahad Mohammed will do that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Staff. This is Shahad Mohammed, Assistant Director of Public Works, and today I'll be covering the new data analysis we received from the pavement condition analysis that had happened the end of 2024, and the report was submitted to us early this, recently this year after we have worked on the results to put together a forecast and, and analysis for the pavement condition for Duncanville. Now, we have done inventory collection as well, so we worked within this on inventory collection for ADRMs, for sidewalks, and for traffic signs and signals. Today, we're going to talk, give an introduction and talk about the objectives of this program and, and doing this, the methodology that we carried in collecting the data. We're going to give some specific data about the inventory and the condition as it stands today for different payment types and for streets, alleys, more focused on streets and alleys, and also a comparison with the previous data that was carried and collected 10 years ago. So some background data, we have, we have select, we, we basically do, as you all know, a, a list of streets for maintenance every single year, and the selection of those streets basically should, whether it has been done that way before or not, but it should come out of, you know, the analysis that is carried through the process, and it should be based on the data that was collected for those streets. Now, in November of 2023, the City Council has authorized the services through a consultant called ICC IMS to collect the data, and the condition assessment happened throughout the year of 2024, and the data analysis report and the results where we worked on it together to be submitted, and we got it in the year of 2025. Now, here's some of the introduction that, that I wanted to show. Currently, the PCI categories that we have, or the ranges of the PCI, ranges from what, what is, which is the pavement condition index. It ranges from excellent to very poor based on a number or a score that this street ga, gets by the, when the data is collected, and it's out of 100 in total. Now, in the detailed report that you had, we have all of the different examples and the treatment types and all of the details that you'd need to know about it, but I love this sandwich of the payment picture that I always put there, because it really shows some illustration of looking at, you know, excellent versus good fear, poor and very poor, and looking at how the cracks really is getting deeper, and really the indication is more like how deep the failure is more than is just the visual cracks on top for those different conditions. Now, the objective of this analysis is really to do more of a data-driven and create a prediction analysis, decisions for the selection of the streets and the maintenance, or the spending of the city budget, as well as really looking at more optimization of the city limited budgets compared to the needs. So when you look at pavement, really in their life, they tend at some point physically to really start having worse drops, or more rapid drops in their condition index about midlife. So we really, the focus is really to try to spend money on extending the life of those pavements early in this, or extended this area of the life of the pavement, rather than getting here, because you see there is a quick drop compared to here when it, it hits midlife usually, and that's when you reach, you know, reconstruction, and that's really is a different dollar, completely different dollar estimate compared to maintenance treatments. Now, for streets inventory and condition, the data, based on the recent data collected, you can see that how the City of Duncanville payments as far as street is split between excellent, very good, fear, and good, marginal poor, and very poor. Now, the city overall network PCI is, stands at 73, which is a good condition. Basically, very good condition overall, of course, this is an overall condition index, it's not, it's an average of every city street. The breakdown of the inventory, we have a total of 165 lane miles, and as, the majority of our streets are asphalt streets compared to concrete streets, and we do have, we broke it down per arterial local, and you see that majority of our streets are also, asphalt streets are local streets, so majority of the arterials here are concrete pavement, yes, sir.
Could you define lane miles?
Lane miles is a one-mile lane, one mile of one lane of a street, basically. And that's really the general measurement that is being used as really a unit for measuring streets, rather than, it could be feet, it could be, we do have the data and different versions of it, but the standard industry use is lane mile, which is basically one mile per one lane of the street.
So if you have a stretch of one mile, that's three lanes wide, that's three lane miles, just with the number.
Yes. So we have found that there is a backlog of 7% as it stands today, which is the total of these, and that 7% backlog is really a PCI of 40 and under, which is really a failed street. And those failed streets are not really streets that can be improved using any of the maintenances that we use, using general funds in general, those are going to be considered capital improvement projects to be addressed. Here are some of the scenarios we could run to look at the forecast and how the city could perform based on different budget analysis we have assumed and put in here. If we target a PCI of 80, let's say, and we have a zero backlog, our goal is like to reduce our backlog as much as possible, so if we say a zero backlog, we are expecting a $5.3 million per year and to be spent on the city streets for the upcoming five years to be able to achieve that. Now, if we want to say that's really outside of, of the city's ability to address however we do maintain our current PCI overall network percent of 73 and keep it as is for the upcoming five, five years. While the streets are deteriorating, you know that you still have to invest more money, so that's going to be a $2.9 million per year. When we look at the PCI and we just have. When we look at the PCI and we just have uh, you know, a final PCI of seventy, and while we are able to reduce the backlog a little bit, uh, and that's a a one-point-eight-five-million-dollar per year, now, the green that you see here, this is the current city of Duncanville approach or current city of Duncanville budget level, which is a one-point-seven-million-dollar per year uh that we have for streets maintenance. Now, under that, you can see that the forecast shows a degradation in the overall network PCI dropping into seventy, uh, almost seventy uh PCI instead of seventy-three today. If that becomes, continues to be flat uh as far as budgeting. Now, overall, uh, we talked about the overall being seven, uh, any reduction here to uh the budget, of course, under uh what it it stands today will result in further in- in increasing of our backlog and a reduction of our PCI uh in general.
Did you go back um to slide twenty-nine?
Yes.
Okay, so you were talking about under forty uh was.
Forty and under, yes.
Was some point of failure, and fair is that fifty to sixty range. So when I look over there, you've got what, three percent, four percent, four percent, uh, poor, poor, and marginal?
Right.
So would those not be the priorities that you'd be looking at? I realize on the on the slide, on slide thirty, you may have answered that, but I got lost there. Would those be recommended to be the first streets we look at because those, those would have to be replaced, right?
Yeah, sure, those would have to be replaced, but that, those have to be replaced as a reconstruction. So these are capital improvement projects. When we talk about maintenance projects that we're, we're spending the budget on mainly, we're talking about treatments like between light and moderate, like preventative or, you know, maintenance, between talking about resurfacing, talking about um milling overlays, research, and we're, we talk about micro-surfacing as well.
Is that include crack sealing?
Crack sealing, of course, is, crack sealing is really a preparation to micros- micro-surfacing. It is not recommended to do crack sealing on its own because it makes the streets look ugly, actually, but when you look at them, but it does help the street, but it just doesn't make it look good. So with that, we do crack seal and come out on top of it with a micro surface is the ideal case. But that's, but that's a preventative maintenance, that is a a big uh maintenance we apply at four to five years age of the street to just extend its life and keep it in a good shape as long as possible. Now, milling overlay can be applied to to more of the streets that are in the fifty to the sixty range of PCI, for example, because that's like we're milling, we might have some bits of base repairs and it's still overlaying, and it could work, but but when you hit that level of like forty and under, when you were in that range, you're really at the sandwich that we talked about, that the cracks are deep in the pavement, that you're at a point to where you have to redo everything. And to the dollar, you're talking about jumping from, let's say, the highest maintenance cost could be like about four-hundred-thousand per lane mile to a reconstruction cost of a one-point-two to two-point-three-million-dollar per lane mile. So, but I to specifically to your question about saying, why don't we do this first? We've talked about like worst first, it could be an approach that, you know, that has been, that probably been done long ago in the past where, okay, these are the worst streets, let's do them first. But we're doing them for, where we talked about putting the lipstick on the, on the pick kind of situation that we have dealt with for a long time, where we're doing treatments that are not suitable, not in the right time, not in the right place, because we just wanted to look like it was, you know, developed, but but to avoid that, we have, in this analysis, we have looked at multiple factors to prioritize the streets to do first, like in first year, for example. So it was a combination of looking at the strength of the pavement, looking, so we create a priority score based on looking at the strengths of the pavement, at the pavement type, so we do have more asphalt than concrete, so we assigned a little more score to asphalt than concrete to select more asphalt than concrete. Concrete is stronger than asphalt, so we have given concrete less score than asphalt because we can pick, we want to prioritize more asphalt for, because of that. For example, the use, uh, the classification of the street, is it local or arterial? Or what's the connectivity? Some streets that are arterial get more score because they are more important, they're more used, heavily used, so uh that's really was the dr- the driving factor for prioritizing steer- streets.
Okay, and by the way, uh, I want to apologize that when I said earlier we needed a rush, uh, we don't. I was told by the city manager that the executive session is gonna take longer than we would have had, so.
I can blend our next presentation with the quarterly report, so.
Well, we're in no hurry now, and I apologize.
Right, so did that answer your question?
Yes, it did, uh, last question since I've now given us more time. So those three categories right there, uh, red, red, and yellow, orange.
We're only looking at the two reds?
Okay.
Sorry.
Well, here, here's my question, I'll make, I'll make it simple. Um, would you, uh, would you have uh an idea that those are probably more than likely residential streets and not our main, our main streets?
Yes, uh, not all of them, of course, but majority of our worst streets are our local streets versus our arterials. Our arterials are concrete streets, so they perform better in general uh on the analysis. Yes, they did perform better in on the analysis, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Uh, so for alleys inventory, and uh this is really moving to alleys, we have done the same analysis on alleys, and as you see, the way our alleys look like, and our overall network uh PCI for alleys is sixty-five. And um so our alleys are wor- in a worse shapes than than streets, and that's normal, and that's, that's really uh something that is in general um happening in majority of the cities. Investments for alleys are less than investments for streets. And and uh however, the worst alleys or the percentage just happen to be also a seven percent for reconstruction or the deferred uh maintenance to major maintenance or basically uh uh capital improvement is seven percent. Here are some of the areas.
Are the unapproved easements alleys considered with this? Where you just have a dirt easement, basically?
No, because those dirt, you cannot create a score for a a dirt pavement, and because really the analysis that was done is um, there has to be a pavement to be able to to use that, those laser points to co- collect the data and be accurate or as accurate as possible, of course.
Is there a way that we would consider that or look at those as potential projects? I mean, they're probably capital improvement project at that level, I guess.
What we can do is, we can look at those projects to find the inventory separately. We look at how many alleys do we have that are unimproved dirt, and then we have to estimate, and which is a a separate program that we can carry, estimate how much it's gonna cost to turn those unimproved alleys into improved alleys, and we can carry that as a separate program.
Not really gonna confuse everybody on this issue because uh there's a difference between an alley and an easement, correct?
Yes.
And we have unimproved easements that are drivable.
You have to obtain right away, so right now, those are easements, a lot of those, that's private property to the center of those undeveloped, and so we have utility easements there, but we have to obtain right away all the way through that.
Is that gonna be the case with most of those, where they're, they're dirt, it's probably an easement?
Yeah.
And I promised that before, though, there, there's so many parking concerns in in the Fair Meadows neighborhood. To have alleys back there would help alleviate some of that, but that's a bigger animal.
Yeah, and to balance, a lot of, a lot of cities are moving towards having like, like, some of cities really fund alleys that are, that have garbage pickup because they are funded, funded mainly by sanitation fees. And uh some of the cities really trying to move away completely from that and have a front pickup only and basically not fund alleys at all and have it back as a responsibility of the residents, which is another thing that, so that's really um. Because those pavements, pavements are expensive, yes, sir.
So, since we already, we've already gone there. So with, is my understanding with the unimproved easements, that if it is unimproved, it's dirt or grass, that though all of those are easements or most of them are, because?
I, it's my understanding that all of those are likely easements, I don't know for sure, but they probably, all of those that are undeveloped are just easements, there's no right away in place currently.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So we're on the same analysis on alleys to create some forecasts and look at how budget can represent into uh, you know, investment can represent into the upcoming five years. And as it stands uh today, we are um, we have a budget of half a million dollars per year that roughly being used for alleys, and with that spending or continuing that flat, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a a close PCI where we're at, which is a sixty-six and a zero uh percent backlog. Now, that when we, if we target a higher PCI on um alleys to improve its condition overall, we're gonna have to uh probably recommend to increase our uh maintenance, uh, fun, yeah, funding maintenance to a seven-hundred-thousand um per year. So this is really a comparison that I wanted to throw in there to bring your attention to uh looking at the data that we had received ten years ago uh compared to the data we received today uh and the investment that had happened in the city and its impact. I have to say, this was not an apple-to-apple comparison because there were differences in the methodologies that we've carried, the uh previous analysis and the ones that we've carried today. So network PCI was measured to be in twenty fifteen as sixty-two-point-nine. Measured PCI that currently in twenty twenty-five is seventy-three. The backlog um eh, which is the forty and under PCI, in twenty twenty, twenty fifteen was nine percent, and twenty twenty-five is uh uh seven percent, or it's reduced. The network size analyzed at the time was uh more than the network size analyzed this time. And also, the method, uh methodology was different. As I mentioned, streets and alleys were addressed together in the previous analysis as one pavement condition index, and we separated it this time because streets and alleys are not the same thing, they're not funded the same way, and they should not be combined in one uh prediction uh or prediction analysis. Now, for funding forecast, as you see here, there was also twenty fifteen, there was a fif- a five-hundred per year. And it projected to increase the PCI, which it did, basically, uh, and also for twenty twenty-five funding, we have carried down one-point-seven um million per year. And uh in conclusion, um, as I mentioned, this really shows that um the analysis has proved spending on the pavement was able to help the pavement uh and um really, the recommendation that I would take away from this one is really to reduce that margin of the cycles of collecting the data to be able to create more accurate, because the more data we get, the more accurate the data is eh that we have, and also the more we can see the forecast and the trend clearly, and we create a proper prediction analysis to follow. So recommend a cycle of two to three years to recollect the data and do this analysis again. So um in conclusion, really, the city, as we said, city stands today as a very good, you know, position as far as the overall network PCI, cities arterial uh and concrete streets are in better shapes than our local and asphalt streets in general. Forecasts show potential three-point reduction in PCI as we stand today if we continue a flat funding. Any funding decrease will de- accelerate the PCI decline and also create a further uh backlog of failed streets. Approximately seven percent of the network today is failed streets, and we talked about that, it's really scoped as outside of the maintenance budget anymore, and it has to be addressed through a CRP or any other funding uh programs in the future for major maintenance. The long-term goal is really to maintain or improve our PCI and also to focus on reducing our backlog. And also, we uh we talked about the comparison to the twenty fifteen, uh, we're trending upwards, that's a great thing. So the strategy is working. Eh, a list of FY, and then a list of FY twenty-five uh maintenance, I'm planning to really bring back to council based on an input from this analysis, the streets in uh in-person inspections from the staff, and also uh the different uh priorities we receive from, from uh, and the different requests we receive to prioritize. A combination of all of that is the reason we selected uh the projects we select, and we plan to come back with a finalized list of that as we're processing it today. Not today, today, but these days. So we're, we're coming back uh hopefully in July with those lists that we recommend to do in FY twenty twenty-five, and we'll be also, we'll try to be ready for FY twenty twenty-six li- list ahead of time to uh, now that we have all the data in. And um, yeah. Yeah, so this is really what I uh, then, what I will present next to council.
Mr. MacBurnett.
Mr. Mohammed, would you address the, the costs of, I mean, I know costs haven't remained flat, so, so for funding's flat.
Compared to cost? Yeah.
So, I mean, how much, in ten years' time, you did a milling overlay, it was this much per mile? How much is it per mile now?
Compared to ten years ago?
Or even five years ago.
So, well, the past five years, to to, five to ten years, was unique compared to the, you know, general trend of uh talking about, in general, the supply chain and, and uh inflation rates has just hit twelve percent in one year, as we know after COVID, which is unexpected. Now, after that, unfortunately, it's dated up a little bit, but it continued to be more than what the inflation rate was every year. So at some point, we're talking about currently an estimate of five percent increase per year that cities are counting when they're talking about cost estimates. So if we're talking about five percent per year increase, um, we're talking about, depends on the treatment type, of course, you're doing less streets with the same budget, that's what it is. You're doing less work with the same budget, which is impacting the network overall and uh by having wor- worse, uh, and these analysis really included inflation as part of the factors to really consider for the upcoming five years.
Does the complete streets factor into the determination of the roads that are gonna be addressed?
Not this analysis, but what the, what this analysis can be used for is when we carry, let's say, we create this master plan that we're trying to work on, and we have identified the city's potential for complete streets, you know, where that goes applying the city. That's our, that's where we're gonna be able to identify that, those. If we do, and we know that there is a street that is a good condition but has a potential to become a complete street, what we can do is, we can basically fund or budget just the modifications to turn it into complete street by adding like, you know, the bicycle lanes or this and that, alongside the just normal maintenance, and that makes it look like a brand-new street if we coordinate those together, so that, that can be done too.
Something I wanted to add, and I think it's important, we talked about uh some of those streets that really need to focus on reconstruction because the subgrade, you're at such a failure point that uh I think the practice in times past was, we'll just do a milling overlay. And like Chad was leading to, milling overlay is something you need to be looking at, at a, at a forty or or so ranking, not when it's a four. And so you're, the degradation rate of that investment is so much faster because you did it at a point of failure and not when you should have been doing it. So those are the things we're trying to be cognizant of now moving forward, is what's the, what's the best investment for this project?
Yep, yes, ma'am.
Oh, go ahead.
So um twenty fifteen, twenty twenty-five, one of them says survey, the other one said analyze. One included streets and alleys, the other one had a breakdown and separate. So when we say we're not comparing apples to apples, um, I agree that we should be collecting the data more frequently than what the ten-year period. So um what was analyzed, because I noticed the number was about seven amount difference. One was a two oh three and one was two oh nine, did we add extra amounts? Did we analyze more amounts?
It really depends on that, like, because we, you're talking about, for example, this is a lane mile basis, so we're talking about driving one lane, we're not driving every lane in the city. So the data is really collected ba- based on driving one lane. So the data is really collected based on driving one lane in each direction to collect the data. So that's really more, so that itself creates a difference between the analysis you do, that's why we do it more frequently, we're collecting more data, because this time you drove that lane, next time you drove the other lane, and you're having both of the data, it's more accurate data for the city in general. But that thing is like, this street is closed in the time of the analysis, this street was this, this street had work, this street had that. It really is a small, you know, number of streets that is not necessarily really impactful on the overall analysis, really, yes.
Yeah, so.
And some of them were not paved, they're paved, they're, were not paved, for example, they are paved, unpaved alleys that became paved alleys, things like that really is normal. You can't have exactly same data, there have to be normal differences every time we collect the data.
Okay, no, we're, we're at.
No, go ahead.
So, yeah, kind of connected with that. So as far as the methods, and you mentioned driving the street, but as far as the actual analysis, I mean, no one's on the street looking, you know.
Right.
Yeah, so I mean, how, how are they, what's the method for collecting?
Yeah. So there are, yeah, there are laser, it is four thousand laser points on those, on that really technology that drives the street, and it collects very detailed data that is turned into, there, it's even using AI to turn those into like visual analysis of, there's imagery, a whole imagery of how it's looking like. Now, on those, there's a windshield inspection as well. So there is a windshield inspection by a person that is specialized, is sitting there alongside what they can, because you see, some of those streets, you'll get in and there is, for example, leaves on top of them, that skews the laser data. Or if there is, let's say, cars blocking, parking on the streets, they can't get there. So there is a visual part to it that is adding, there is also a set of quality control happens on, with engineers on their desks, looking at the data and the imagery to verify this type of distress versus that. So there's a lot of work that comes with it, that's why it takes like six months to a year to complete the analysis.
Well, I would again agree that, you know, the more often we do this, the better, but whatever the method is, I guess, so make sure we use the same lasers that we used two years ago, we use next year, right?
Well, technology, technology is improving and it's changing, so, but it's changing for more accuracy and for better results.
Okay, thank you, and I'm gonna take you up on your offer that we're gonna move three C to six A at your quarterly report.
Thank you.
And with that, we're going to recess out of our briefing session at seven oh three PM and move as quickly as we can into a regular session. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna call our regular session to order at seven ten PM. Welcome to all that are here, thank you for coming. And we will begin our regular session with the invocation from Pastor David Cartwright of First Christian Church. Please stand. Thank you, Pastor Cartwright. Please join us in our pledges to our flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united. I pledge allegiance to Texas.
Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna move on to our reports, I'm gonna start with the mayor's report. And tonight, I just want to extend gratitude to our city manager and our team that put together this year's Memorial Day service. Weather came in, and for the team that was watching the weather on Sunday night, I think, including Bart Stevenson and some of our emergency response folks, well played, because as it turns out, it would have been a little disruptive if we had gone on with the event outside. So they had a very well-coordinated plan in place to have the event indoor at the rec center, and it went off without a hitch, and it was very well-attended, very excited to see everything go so smoothly. So thank you all, staff and police and fire for being there at that event. Earlier in the week, it was brought to my attention by Assistant Fire Chief Greg Chase that they wanted to leave, well, there was a request to leave the flags up in front of Holy Spirit Catholic Church on Daniel Dale. When I inquired why, it's a Rotary Club issue, and they were gonna leave them up till Fourth of July anyway, so the answer was easy, wasn't my call. And it was explained that this gentleman was not a Duncanville resident, but he has family that's in Duncanville, you see his picture up there, Corporal Billy Charles Driver. He was raised just outside of the Dallas area, but he had family members here. He grew up in Dallas, and in July of nineteen fifty, he was deployed in Korea to the Busan perimeter in the Republic of Korea. Initially, he was reported as missing in action, and later he was declared killed in action on September fifth of nineteen fifty. In September, on September ninth of twenty twenty-four, his remains were proven through new technology to be his. So his family was excited to be able to put that to piece after seventy-five years. And his family came from east tech, from west Texas, Midland, as far away as Tennessee, and all around the metroplex area, a hundred miles out, there were quite a few folks that showed up. And on the Memorial Day service, I want to thank the city manager for including a small portion of the family to come to our Memorial Day service. Again, even though this wasn't a young man that grew up in this area, his remains were here, and they were, they were being held at, at the funeral home on Cochrane Hill. And so with that, the city manager, the fire department, police department, and other city staff put together a route down Daniel Dale where after the remains were, the, the family got together at, at the funeral home and, and got to just have a private service there. My wife and I were asked to be there, we weren't involved in the, in the family get-together there, but we did, we were there just to honor, honor this, this gentleman and the fact that he was being, his remains were leaving Duncanville and moving to the DFW Cemetery out off of Mountain Park Creek, Mountain Park Creekway, Mountain Creek Parkway, I apologize. From that point, it was, I will tell you, well, at, at the memorial service, the family was recognized there. It, it fit in very well, and again, I want, I want to thank the city manager and Noel Garcia for fitting that portion in because it was a real moment in Duncanville to be able to show our support of veterans, and even in this special case where remains from fifty years, seventy-five years ago were brought forward and finally gonna be put to rest, we got to be a part of that. And so the family was, was recognized during the Memorial Day event at the rec center to a standing ovation. And the following day, they, well, more than the following day, it was a few days later, there was an entourage led by a group, and I wish I knew the name of the motorcycle group that, veterans that drove down, and you could see what we drove under on the way out to the cemetery, this great display, and this is, only shows one side of the street, there were a lot of people lined up in front of the church on the other side with all the American flags in the backdrop, it was a beautiful scene, and it was a great day for Duncanville to be a part of something that was so special. So thanks to all that were involved in putting that together in honor of Corporal Billy Charles Driver. With that, I'll go on to council member reports, and I've got Councilman MacBurnett.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, along the same thing, prayers for our Chamber of Commerce President Steve Martin, his mom Mary Martin passed away. And if you knew Mary Martin, she was very much a beloved figure. Some people don't know, she even, she had a real good sense of humor, she even played Bobo the Clown at times, I don't know if you've ever seen that, but, but wonderful pie maker and, and that kind of stuff, but prayers for them. And also, our citizens on patrol lost their chief, Joe Tucker, and his wife's still active with that, but it's a guy that did a lot of service for, for Duncanville and, and with the police force, so, you know, life's well-lived for both of them. Also, with the, the mayor, I agree the Memorial Day and what they did for Corporal Driver is just outstanding and, as well. And I always usually like to talk about some upcoming events, but on the seventh, on Saturday, there's a Junior Grand Prix that's open for kids of all ages. So that's, that's a good thing we have coming up, and then Juneteenth, of course, is on the fourteenth, along with Flag Day, but there's also a health fair at Duncanville High School that day and a movie in park later that night on the fourteenth. And just continue to watch your city website because the events are all listed, and we just have good things happening in Duncanville. Thank you.
Mayor Portam Kuntz.
Thank you, Mayor. So last week, I attended, it was an open house at Central Elementary, and it was for former students and former teachers and staff there. So Central Elementary over the next year is going to be undergoing a major renovation to transition to becoming a fine arts academy. And Central Elementary, it was the original high school in Duncanville, it was built in nineteen twenty-nine, and it was built almost, almost directly across the street from the original schoolhouse, which was built in Duncanville in eighteen eighty-seven. And so there's a lot of just cultural and historical significance there with the school. And so it was, you know, it's good to get together with, again, some of those former teachers and students, and some of those, almost had kids, but older individuals went to that elementary school back in the sixties. And so it was a bittersweet moment for the school, but, you know, they're all excited to see what's coming in the future again as the school transitions to a fine arts academy. And then also, so the Duncanville Nature Conservancy, they had their, their lad fest a couple of weeks ago, and so they raised over seven thousand dollars to support conservation and preservation efforts in the city. And then I also wanted to share, you know, my condolences for Mr. Joe Tucker. So he was actually the president of the Duncanville Police Academy Association, and just an individual who spent his whole life in public service in different fields and different disciplines. different disciplines. And really, the kind of person, when it's hard to find people who want to get out and do anything, and you've got one person who gets out and really does a lot for the community. And so he will be missed. Thank you.
Councilman Penbaker.
Good evening. I spoke with Chief Stogner a little bit earlier about an incident that happened this weekend on Sunday. About 1,600 hours, our officer Gomez identified a suspected fugitive. And he detained and began to investigate the fugitive, and after the investigation, determined that he would make the arrest of a Brax White. Shortly after this, ACO Chamberlain took custody of Brax White and delivered him to the puppy prison at the Tri-Cities Animal Shelter. He was returned to his owner because he was chipped. And that's to say, get your animals chipped. If our wonderful officers that take care of our four-legged and two-legged citizens find your chipped animal, you will get it back quickly. That is all.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gooden.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to, I'll be brief. Want to say what a great job Bloom Fest was. It was so exciting. I think I danced the night away from the moment the band came up Emerald City to the time they exited the stage. I was up dancing and having a good time. And as the crowd started to fill in and could hear the music, it was a really good night. And that was only the first one. So yes, it did kind of start off slow because people needed to get off of work. It was on a Friday afternoon. But as the night went on and the sun went down, it was a good evening. It was good to be out there, have a good time with our citizens and the community. So that was a great success. Look forward to having those again. The fire truck pool, the mayor and the at-large, we had put together a youth team. And I think they gypped us of our first place, but you know what? Whatever it takes to make y'all feel better, we know who really won. It was that youth that was out there pulling the truck. So that was a great event. And also, to attend the corporals' service, thank you Duncanville for doing that. I'm a military mom, as most of you know. And so as we were standing out there, I think it was council member Vera Cruz and his family was present, and then we saw the family coming down. It was kind of an emotional moment that I wasn't expecting to feel that, but to know that someone was reunited with the remains with their family. It was very commendable of what you did in holding the flag over Daniel Dale. So thank you so much for supporting our community the way you do. And with that, Mayor, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Now on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, first, picking up with the fire truck pool, I'd like to congratulate the Duncanville Fire Department for besting the Duncanville Police Department in the fire truck pool. Not that I'm keeping track or anything, but there's some opportunity for improvement there for the police department. So, as he turned, as the chief turns right in the back of the room, so. Mayor, thank you for the accolades relative to the Memorial Day ceremony, as well as the fire truck and everything in the display with Corporal Driver. It really takes a total team effort. The Parks and Recreation Department has done a splendid job with Bart and Tyler and Noel in putting that together, that event together every year. The fire truck and the displaying of that flag on Daniel Dale, I really have to commend both Assistant Chief Chase, as well as Lieutenant Byrd, for really taking the time to go up and down Daniel Dale. I never knew how many power lines were up and down Daniel Dale, and they had to find a spot where that would work. But they really, they put a lot into that. And then finally, I want to share with counsel and everybody, when you see him, please congratulate him and wish him all of the best. After 32 years of service, Assistant Chief Chase will be retiring on June 27th and sailing off into, with his boat, into retirement. And I know he's really looking forward to doing some fishing, so we'll be sharing more about that in the coming time period. But June 27th would be his last day with the city of Duncanville after 32 wonderful years of service for our residents and our community.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item two, proclamations and presentations. First presentation is to formally introduce and administer the oath of office to the city of Duncanville's Assistant City Managers, Richard Abbott Abernathy, an Assistant Manager of Operations, and Mark Rousher, I'm sorry, did I say that right? Rousher, I apologize. Assistant City Manager of Community. I believe the swearing-in will be performed by the City Secretary, Shakita Taylor.
Mayor and counsel, just while Shakita's coming to the microphone, I'll just introduce both of them. So if, could start with actually having Assistant City Manager Abernathy, maybe his wife, if you'd like to come, and daughter Olivia up to the podium. So Richard Abernathy has a master's degree in public administration. He's really, we're really excited to have Richard serving as the Assistant City Manager for Operations. He brings more than two decades of municipal government experience, having served in senior leadership positions across a range of departments and organizations. He's recognized as a results-driven administrator with a strong background in public works, administrative services, budgeting, project management, and process improvement. Prior experience includes with the cities of Burleson, Waxahachie, and the city of Dallas. He'll be leading human resources, IT, public works, project management, fiscal services, and the city secretary's office. Welcome, Richard.
Okay, would you raise your right hand, please? Okay. I, Richard Abernathy.
I, Richard Abernathy.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Assistant City Manager of Operations.
Of the Office of Assistant City Manager.
Of the City of Duncanville.
Of the City of Duncanville.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you want to introduce your family.
Yes, thank you all so much. This is my wife, Amy, and my daughter Olivia. She's 12 years old and going on to junior high. How quick the time has gone. But I just thank you all for this opportunity. I've been here two weeks. I've really been excited. There's a lot of great opportunities, a great team. Very proud to be a part of it and look forward to working with all of you and continuing the city of champions of Duncanville and everything that it's about. So, thank you.
Mayor and counsel, it's my honor to also introduce you Mark Rousher. Mark, maybe, I don't know if Leslie wants to come up with you or any of the family members, but Mark and his wife Leslie, who is a Duncanville High School graduate, we'll add in. But Mark is, has a master's degree in public administration. He's a certified city planner. He's our new Assistant City Manager for Community Services. Also brings over two decades of diverse public sector leadership experience, a strong record of achievement, municipal management, capital planning, economic development, and public engagement. Prior to joining Duncanville, he was with the town of Sunnyvale, Fort Worth, and then previously the Dallas Public Works Department and the North Central Texas Council of Government. So a tremendous amount of experience. Mark will be overseeing economic development, planning, parks and recreation, communications, marketing, the fieldhouse, and the library. Welcome, Mark.
You raise your right hand, please. I, Mark Rousher.
I, Mark Rousher.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Assistant City Manager of Community.
Of the Office of Assistant City Manager of Community.
Of the City of Duncanville.
Of the City of Duncanville.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mayor and counsel, and Mr. Finch, City Manager. Really appreciate this opportunity. This is my wonderful family here, my wife Leslie, and my daughter Emma, and my son Jack. And then my father-in-law is back here as well, Augustine Calderon. And then my mother, Kathy Rousher, was able to join us tonight as well. So really excited to be here. As Richard said, you've got a great thing going here, and I know there's a lot of good momentum, and I'm really pleased to be able to be a part of it, working with Mr. Finch and the rest of the city staff, and as well as you, Mayor and counsel, to really take Duncanville, you know, forward and to great things here in the future. And so thank you again for entrusting me with this, with this opportunity tonight.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to item B, presentation of the Keep Duncanville Beautiful Summer 2025 Business Beautification Award and Plaque, and that is going to be Mr. Tyler Agee, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel, City Manager. I believe I have Mr. Ted Straub in the audience tonight. He's going to be representing our Business Beautification Award winner. Thank you for joining me. After I read the proclamation, we can present the plaque and get a brief picture, so. The city of Duncanville is committed to improving the physical quality of the community life, and the Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board has established, was established to promote this commitment. And the mission of the Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board is to empower Duncanville citizens and businesses to take responsibility for enhancing their community environment. And each quarter, the Keep Duncanville Beautiful Board recognizes one commercial property within the city for significant improvements to the exterior portion of the property, landscape improvements, and/or long-term maintenance of the property that exemplifies high-quality standards. And Scooter's Coffee, located at 700 West Camp Wisdom Road, has been selected as the Business Beautification Award recipient for Summer 2025. Now therefore, Greg Contreras, Mayor of the City of Duncanville, Texas, do hereby urge all residents to join in congratulating Scooter's Coffee, located at 700 West Camp Wisdom Road, and commending the business for contributing to the beautification of our city. Thank you again, sir.
Congratulations. Now for next item C, Mr. Agee will report on the recognition of Keep Duncanville Beautiful Summer 2025 Curb Appeal Residential Properties.
Yes, sir. Thank you again. So these residential curb appeal awards celebrate individuals who help Duncanville become a more welcoming and vibrant, beautiful place to live. If we have any winners of this award represented tonight, if you could join me after I call out your home, we'll take a brief photo right before I move on to the next one. Is that okay? Thank you. All right. For District One, we have Clifton Boyd, 1019 Quail Run. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Next up, for District Two, we have Fred Smith, 203 Linda Lane. For District Three, we have Stephen Reed, 727 Eisenhower Drive. For District Four, we have Alicia Young, 1503 Haisley Drive. And for District Five, we have Dimitrio Uleau, 1302 North Cedar Ridge Drive. We appreciate those who could make it tonight, and you can pick up your curb appeal winner bags at the rec center anytime this week. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, now we're going to move on to item three, citizen input. Pursuant to Section 55007 of the Texas Government Code, a member of the public has the opportunity to address the city council concerning any matter of public business or any posted agenda item. Please be reminded, as I call your name, we did not receive any electronic requests? Okay. When I call your name, state your name and address before you speak. So first is Tammy Greba. Welcome.
I come forth today, over the past year or so, I've noticed a decline in the... Okay, can you hear me now?
Can you name an address, please?
I'm sorry. Tammy Greba, G-R-E-B-B-A. And my address is 226 Moore Street, and that's in Duncanville.
Thank you.
Okay. So over the past year and a year or so, I've noticed a decline in the accessibility features on the light poles. Either they're disabled, or they're not working properly, or the volumes turn too down, too far down, especially on streets that have high traffic, which we really need to rely on to cross. Or sometimes they don't say the name of the street, which is important as well to cross. I'd like to be able to walk freely through my city, and I'd hate to walk a mile to get to that one light that doesn't work. And I'm like, I'm so close, but I'm not, I'm just yet so far to get to where I need to go. So I was wondering, moving forward, how can the city make sure that those lights are accessible and working?
All right, thank you. Someone will be in touch with you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Ms. Bailey Nguyen.
Good afternoon. My name's Bailey Nguyen. My address is 1102 Big Stone Gap Road here in Duncanville. I stand before this body this, today, asking that you create a code of ethics that addresses the accountability that some of you have constantly talked about. When I ran for a seat on the city council, I expected that I would win or lose based on the work that I put in my efforts. Instead, what I encountered was one member, C... Instead, what I encountered was one member seeking to sabotage my campaign by calling citizens who allowed my signs up to get said signs removed. One member and their spouse went on social media and attempted to bully and harass me, even slander my character with accusations and untruths. However, what was even more devastating was the fact that the wife of the leader of this city chose to sit under the tent of my opponent during multiple days of the election. I respect the right of every citizen to support whomever they choose. Perhaps she did not realize that her presence bespoke not only her stamp of approval, but her spouse's. Unfortunately, I did not prevail in my efforts to make a difference in this city by serving on the City Council, but I did have fun. I did enjoy meeting many of my neighbors. Yet today, it is my hope that by standing here today, speaking truth, that it will empower and encourage residents of the City of Champions to seek to serve by running for an elective office. Proverbs 1019 says, I'm sorry, 10:9, whoever walks in integrity walks securely, but whoever perverts his ways will be found out. I pray that the City Council gathers courage and create an ethical code for the action of its members. May it be so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cliff Boyd?
Cliff Boyd, 1019 Quail Run, Duncanville, Texas. I'm here for two reasons, well, three reasons. One, here to support my wife in her nice effort to have a beautiful yard. But mainly, while I'm here, I'm here to equip the council with some skills. I'm here to educate some families with some wisdom. The past four, nearly five years, I've served as a trustee at Dallas College. And I have become so much more knowledgeable of what the opportunities are in our county. And I know that each of y'all have constituents, and each one of them run into problems. They lose their job, their kids don't want to go to school. And so, I really want y'all to be equipped, and I want to offer our services to y'all as elected officials, to do anything we can to make you better and more knowledgeable of what Dallas College offers. We have 130,000 students. Thirty thousand of those students are high schools getting their associate degree at the end of their high school year. And we have all the scholarships in the world. There is not a human being, a child eligible to go to school, that we don't have a scholarship for. So I'm here today to tell those who are listening that if you lose your job and you need reskilling, you need to find a new career path, Dallas College is your answer. And if you, as councilmen, have these issues to deal with in your constituency, I'm here to commit to you all the help, all the effort that's available to me as a trustee, our chancellor is of the same nature, anything we can do. But we have done a horrible job of telling you how good Dallas College is and what it really means to your family. Because our basic purpose, as I consider in life, is I'm here to find a way to eliminate generational poverty.
Thank you. That concludes our Citizens Input portion of our meeting tonight, and we'll move on to Number Four, our Consent Agenda. Mr. Finch?
Yes, Mayor, Council. We went through these consent agenda items in the briefing, one by one, and evaluated those. And I don't think there were any further questions, so we'll let you take action. A move to approve.
Second is reviewed.
I apologize, I should know.
It's okay.
Motion to approve was Mr. Mac Burnett, and the second was...
It's Mr. Koontz, I seconded.
Mr. Koontz. All right. Did we get that? All right. Please vote. All right, thank you. Move on to Items for Consideration. We have not had our executive session yet. That's Item 5A. But we will, after this session, go into executive session and report on any actions as a result of executive session, if there are any. Then we'll move on to Item B, 5B, Election of Mayor Pro Tem for 2025-26, and Ms. Taylor?
We'll take nominations for Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay. Request for nominations for Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Pennebaker?
I'd like to nominate at-large Councilmember DeMonica Gooden.
Okay. Mr. Koontz?
I'd like to nominate Councilwoman for Councilwoman Karen Cherry Brown.
And Mr. Veracruz?
I was going to nominate Will.
Okay. So we have two nominees. Mr. Attorney, to avoid confusion, could you explain to us how we would proceed forward with this vote?
Since you have two candidates, why don't the first person was nominated with Ms. Gooden and the second, Ms. Cherry Brown. So, a vote for Ms. Gooden will be a green, and a vote for Ms. Cherry Brown will be red. And then that way, we could have that election and not have more than one ballot.
Okay, is everyone clear on that?
I couldn't hear you.
Do we need to accept the nomination? Or you don't have to do that?
Don't need to, but if someone wants to withdraw, I certainly won't keep them from doing that.
No withdrawals? Okay, so with that, just a reminder, a vote to green, which would be a yes, would be for Councilwoman DeMonica Gooden. And a vote in the red would be a vote for Councilwoman Karen Cherry Brown. Everybody got that? Okay, with that, please vote. It looks like a vote in the affirmative for Ms. Brown. Did you vote? Looks like a majority vote in the green for Councilwoman Ms. DeMonica Gooden.
For the record, it's four for Ms. Gooden, three for Ms. Cherry Brown. Mayor, the majority vote is received by Ms. Gooden.
Ms. Taylor, do you have that? Okay. All right, with that, congratulations, Ms. Gooden.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
We'll move on to the next item, Item 5C. Consider a resolution approving a hotel occupancy tax fund grant. And I'm going to let Mr. Finch explain this one.
Sure, Mayor, thank you. So, Item 5C, Consider Resolution 25486, approving a hotel occupancy tax fund grant for the fiscal year '25 budget, an amount not to exceed $9,916.21 to the Duncanville Chamber of Commerce to enhance the Chamber building, which serves as the City of Duncanville's visitor's center with a "Welcome to Duncanville" mural in celebration of the Chamber's 70th anniversary. I believe, oh, there's Marcela, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see it for the podium. Ms. Perez is here to help with this. We mentioned earlier, the applicant in this case is the Chamber President, and he was unable to be here this evening. I know I had some conversations with him this afternoon. He did share with me, and Ms. Perez will show you a rendering, he did share with me that that is not necessarily final. As of this afternoon, he was still planning to work with the artist to make some improvements and everything, but he was hoping to get the authorization for the funding for moving forward with the mural. So, Ms. Perez?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Marcela Perez, Economic Development Coordinator. So we're bringing for you the request that was brought to us by Mr. Steve Martin of the Chamber of Commerce for the mural to upgrade their building, and primarily for the celebration of the Chamber's 70th anniversary. So that it will specify "Welcome to Duncanville," and the mural will be visible on the west side of the Chamber Building, which also serves as the visitor's center for the City of Duncanville, and it will be visible to patrons and passersby on Wheatland Road. The specific amount request is $9,916.21. And again, located at the Chamber Building, 300 East Wheatland Road. And in order to approve this request, we are asking for City Council authorization for staff, to direct staff, to create a budget amendment to utilize alternate hot fund sources such as the funds reserves. And this is primarily because the Convention and Visitors Bureau, excuse me, account has, the funds have been accounted for for fiscal year '25. So there are not sufficient funds in the account at the moment to cover the request.
Okay, that's... There's more of a discussion, I think they're hidden away somewhere. I appreciate your explanation, but... So this would not be an ordinary step to move forward to grant a request such as this, because we're having to move funds? City Manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So this would be, we would be authorizing the hot fund appropriation like we would normally do. This would specifically, we'd be using the tourism category, the nine different qualifications. So we would treat this exactly the way what Ms. Perez is referring to, I believe, is actually the next item relative to the annual appropriation for the visitor's center. But there's still plenty of money, if you want to move forward with this, to appropriate hot funds under the other category, and then we could still move forward with this. Being the tourism promotion.
Okay. I'll take y'all's word on that. I just was a little bit confused when I read this. I appreciate your explanation.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you expanding on that. Any questions, Council? Yes. Councilman Mac Burnett?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager, for the explanation.
I apologize. This is the example that was given in the application of the mural.
Definitely a proponent of the arts and something like that that would help beautify. My question is, relates towards the Arts Commission, do they have any say in this as well?
Mr. Finch?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So it's my understanding that this was not referred to the Arts Commission. It could be referred to the Arts Commission, but this would not be using Arts Commission or the Arts Fund. It would not be using their money. This is relative more towards tourism promotion. And now that the image is up here, if I just take a second, what he shared with me this afternoon is that he's still, like for instance, it says on here, greetings from. This was an early rendering that he was working on. I know we talked today about the word welcome. He just wasn't able to be here, obviously, this evening, under the circumstances with the passing of his mom to talk about this more. He also shared with me that he was looking to incorporate other elements, not necessarily just DISD sports associated with this, but incorporate other elements and really have a better representation of the culture, really, of the City of Duncanville. And he shared with me that they still were working on those graphics and what that would look like, and that he could certainly share those with us at the appropriate time.
At any point during that discussion, we do have a couple more questions. Was there any discussion about getting maybe some feedback or ideas to complement this sign from our Arts Commission?
I think from my conversation with him this afternoon, he certainly was open to the idea, and I think that that is certainly something that we could do. I know that his desire and interest is advancing this so that it could coincide with the 70th, I believe, anniversary of the Chamber. And he was looking to do an event maybe later the fall. I think his primary concern was getting the funding appropriation for this so that they could move forward, and then certainly was very open to feedback from the Arts Commission, and we could certainly refer to the Arts Commission.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Koontz?
Thank you, Mayor. So, again, so it's not coming out of the Arts Fund?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I will, if I may, we did have a conversation with Mr. Martin this afternoon as well, and had brought up that very topic. He did express that time was of the essence and wanted to proceed. There was conversation, I know, with Mr. Hamby about possibly presenting this to the Arts Council, but the time that he was wanting to get the application submitted, the Arts Commission did not yet have a policy or application. Therefore, it proceeded as a regular hot funds request.
I guess there being, the existence of that special arts fund now, could it necessarily be transferred over at some point, since there is a special fund for murals?
The Arts Fund?
So if we approve this tonight, and then later on, it could be transferred from that fund over to regular hot funds?
Theoretically, if the Arts Commission approved, yes.
Right.
Is that what, I just want to make sure.
Yes, sir. Okay. And then, I wanted to make one comment, just looking at, I saw the artist that provided the quote, so with Ms. Perez, I know that we're going to get something extraordinary, so I have no concerns with seeing her name on it, I have no concerns about what it might look like. I guess the only question I had, as far as where it faced, because with it facing west, it looks like it's facing that parking lot, which is what you would see headed out of Duncanville. But there's also the face on the opposite side of the building, which you see coming into Duncanville. And so, was there any consideration given to being on the other side of the building?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is this angle not facing east, which would be the west side of the building?
Yeah.
So if you're coming in from Cockrell Hill towards Main Street, isn't this the bandage point?
No, it would be from, it's on the west side of the building, so it would be exactly like Councilmember Koontz said, for Wheatland going eastbound.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for that correction.
Well, I would, well, I'd ask, and I'm in favor of this, even with the complications. But yeah, I would ask, you know, if they would consider looking at the other side of the building, if that might be a better option. Because again, as you're coming in, especially if you're going into Armstrong Park, you see that to your left right before you turn, so...
Well, in the event that Mr. Martin's listening tonight, I too want to go forward with this, so my questions aren't meant to derail, no pun intended, with the train on there, this effort. But one other question I have for the City Manager is, we do have a mural ordinance? And have we, does that ordinance, as it stands today, apply to this mural?
That is a great question, Mayor. And I am not prepared to answer it at this moment. But we will definitely work with them to make sure.
And not to hold things up, because there is a time crunch, and I don't want to mention this for that reason, but maybe it can go through the process. But I think if you look at our mural ordinance, which is probably now somewhere in excess of 20 years old, it could take a good looking over, and it could be made, well, brought up to speed a little bit better than, as I recall, when it was first written, how, the process that you have to go through to get a mural approved. So that's something for a later time. Mr. Pennebaker?
Thank you, Mayor. And that, the mural ordinance, I'm not sure, but I think it used to fall under the purview of KDB at some point. I spoke with Steve today, Mr. Martin, because I was aware of his situation and didn't know if he would be here or not, and had some questions about this. And some of them were the incorporation of other elements, like the baseball team, which is the reason we have the designation as a City of Champions. And softball, soccer, volleyball, there's a lot of wonderful sports that we've had here. This is a rough draft, so we'll have some different elements here. And he expressed to me that the side... And he expressed to me that the sides of this will be filled in as well. You won't just have a big blank canvas on the outside of it. Um, he, he also did express a willingness to work with Arts Commission when I spoke with them, so that's it.
Mr. McBurnett?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the request, seconded by, where'd it come from? Oh, it was a deep voice, uh, from Councilman Pennebaker. Please vote. Yep, thank you. And now we'll move on to item five D. Uh, Ms. Perez?
Yes, sir. So, um. A second, uh, request with, uh, similar, related to the similar topic in regards to the Chamber's 70th anniversary, um, was received specifically for, um, maintenance and improvement of the exterior of the Chamber Building. Um, the request included power washing, the building, parking lot, and sidewalks, as well as to update the landscaping around the building, and to cover the expense of a new LED monument sign as it cannot be repaired. At this amount, um, this, the request was for thirty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars with seventy-five cents. Um, again, the Chamber address, the building located at three hundred East Wheatland. And, uh, the approval or the, the request is for similar authorization as the previous, um, for direction for staff to create a budget amendment to utilize alternate hot funds.
Okay, Ms. Coontz?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, not opposed to it, but I would like to better understand the funding and how we plan on doing, um, the funding because the available budget does say five oh four and seventeen cents. So, city manager, explain it on elementary level for me to understand, please.
So the hot funds, we have the nine different elements. So the, the staff report that you're looking at actually has a specific amount of the money that was budgeted for the current fiscal year budget. And so the, the planned budget was for the traditional, what I would say, uh, visitor's center expense. Okay, and so that's what that amount accounts for, and that's why it's essentially low because that's already been paid to the Chamber. With this request, there's still money available in our annual hot fund to appropriate two other things. And there's the nine different elements of the hot fund. We've talked about sports, we've talked about, uh, obviously, we've got some new legislation we're excited about for the future. Um, there's any number of different categories, but one of the categories actually is a visitor's center. So we can use some of that non-arties fund money to appropriate additional funds for the funding of the city's visitor's center. So it's still available, it's just moving it from where it currently resides in basically hot funds, unassigned fund balance to that specific budget line.
Okay, so in our adopted budget, we have a visitor's center Chamber funding line.
Correct.
That is already, um, pretty much been paid out other than five hundred and four dollars. The additional money they're requesting now is coming out of hot funds because this does qualify for hot funding. So you're pulling it from that funding to take it over to cover this.
Exactly.
Okay, so that, that does make sense. Now, when is the 70th anniversary?
He, he mentioned to me fall is when they were planning on doing something. I don't, I don't know the exact date. Marcel, I don't know if you have a exact date.
I, I'm looking at the application now, and I don't see an exact date either, but I know, again, in speaking with Mr. Martin, um.
So fall?
Yes, the fall, and that's why they were trying to, um, get the funding approved now so that they could get everything in order to have it ready by the time that the date comes along.
I was just, thank you for that because, um, I know in fall we approve a new budget, and I was just wondering why we couldn't take it from that budget when we approve it and then. But it's time, we're against time, and he needs it to. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Coontz?
Thank you, Mayor. So how much, um, you said there's a, there's a line item for visitors' center in our budget for this year, how much is that?
I don't. I don't have access to that information right now, I apologize.
Coming.
Well, no, I wanted, awkward silence, that's, that's better, right? Uh, well, I, do we know, and probably other questions that, uh, would be better for the Chamber? But do we know how many visitors a year actually visit the Chamber in person?
I, I don't know that we have those numbers at this moment, but yes, that would be a great question for the Chamber.
How many employees does the Chamber have? I'm sorry, there's probably a question for you. There, there's two employees, okay. Two full-time employees?
Yes, sir.
They're salaried?
That I don't know.
Trying to give city manager a chance. Uh, do we know anything about the, the website? How much, uh, traffic they get on the Chamber's website?
No, that, that could be, um, I will make note that that could be a future consideration for the Chamber to report back on metrics like that.
Okay, and I'm just, you know, these are just, um, I know we have a line item in our budget in support of the visitor's center, and, um, this is, you know, most years we do approve some additional hot fund, uh, support to the Chamber, and so, uh, but I'm not sure if I've ever seen, uh, a, any financials in regards to the Chamber and just as far as, uh, data that shows the ROI and, you know, th- those kinds of things.
So, uh, Councilmember Coontz, the, there's, I'm not gonna be able to answer the exact question because the, the budget actually has a contractual and professional services line of six hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And then the Chamber, um, specific expense would be included in that, but I don't have the breakdown of what that is, so I'd have to get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions on, um, item D? McBurnett?
Um, I, I do wanna make a comment that this is our only visitor's center, so it's, it's the only one, but I'm gonna make the motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the request by Councilman McBurnett. Second by Councilman Pennebaker. Please vote. Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to item five E. Um, Ms. Perez, up again.
So the, uh, third request from the Chamber for a hot fund grant for fiscal year twenty-five, um, was for costs associated with replacing the Chamber's computer server. Um, this was, the request is specifically to reimburse the Chamber for expenses paid in December twenty-twenty-four to replace the computer server in, um, that they had to pay for an emergency, um, due to a server crash. And that amount is for nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars ninety-nine cents, um, for their server at their building. And again, as, uh, mentioned previously, the, uh, request would need to, um, uh, direct and authorize staff to create a budget amendment to utilize alternate sources.
All right, one, thank you. Um, questions, council? Mr. McBurnett?
Well, uh, I'm gonna make the same comment, and also it's the only visitor's center have to operate, you have to have this technology and stuff, so, uh, so I'm making the motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve items, uh, five E. Second by Councilman, uh, Pennebaker. Questions? Seeing none, please vote. City Secretary, did you get that account? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Ms. Perez.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to item six, uh, staff and board reports, receive, uh, the Public Works Quarterly Report. And, um, Mr. Bryant will, uh, and Ms. Muhammad will be presenting together on this one.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity again to come up here and provide you with, uh, our second quarterly report for Public Works. Uh, so I am Public Works Director, Matt Bryant. With me is Assistant Public Works Director, Shahad Muhammad. Uh, so this is, uh, us and how we divide and conquer the various divisions within Public Works. So we'll start off with building inspections under, uh, led by Building Official Josh McConnell. Uh, so that division is fully staffed, and the, uh, personnel updates, we had a new hire, Ms. Ruth Manzanarez, who is our new permit technician. Um, significant events of this quarter is the annual rental registration, alcohol license, and swimming pool renewals can all be applied for and paid online, as well as inspections can now be scheduled online by the applicants. Uh, we completed a hundred and ninety permits issued, twenty-five COs have been issued, fifty-two properties with over twelve hundred health violations have been corrected, seven hundred and eighty inspections completed in, for buildings and rental properties, and we took in over ninety-eight thousand dollars in revenue. Building Maintenance Division led by the Building Maintenance Superintendent Dennis Suter. Uh, that division is also fully staffed with recent personnel updates. We brought in two new custodians, uh, and we closed out over seven hundred maintenance requests. Engineering and Utilities Administration, we have one vacancy within that division, which is the City Engineer. We recently took on, uh, Public Works Project Coordinator, Ms. Joy Barfield, and our GIS Analyst, Jamero Berry, who have been great with working with us on the grant applications that we will be reporting on to you shortly after this. Equipment Services Division, under Equipment Services Superintendent Darren Uhaus, which is a recent hire that we will be, uh, reporting on next quarter. Uh, that team is, uh, we have one vacancy in that division, the Equipment Services Supervisor. We actually have three, uh, candidates lined up tomorrow to interview for that position, so we'll hopefully be filling that supervisory position very soon. Uh, we completed sixty-two internal service requests. Uh, we did replace two dump trucks, which were, uh, for the Utilities Division, and we held our fleet auction. Uh, we try to have one about every six months. We're trying to move them out as quickly as we can now. So that brought in, um, over a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, um, with the various types of equipment you see there. Neighborhood Services, under, uh, Neighborhood Services Superintendent Victor Pizarro. Uh, that team is now fully staffed. Uh, recent personnel updates includes the onboarding of Neighborhood Services Superintendent Victor Pizarro. Uh, significant updates are the neighborhood suites that you've been hearing about. And, uh, that we, uh, closed out seventy-seven C-click fixed complaints, um, issued three hundred and eleven citations, and we have an eighty-eight percent C-click fixed complaint resolution. Street Maintenance, under the Street Superintendent Johnny Murray, who is a recent onboarding, uh, that we'll be reporting on next quarter. Uh, we currently still have six vacancies in that division that we are actively onboarding some, so hopefully next quarter, uh, we'll have better news than six vacancies. Uh, we closed out zero point three lane miles of roadway improvements, seventy-three potholes repaired, and sixty-nine inlets have been cleaned. In Traffic Operations, under Traffic Operations Superintendent Bijon Borchart, uh, that division is fully staffed. However, uh, we have officially received in writing a notice of retirement from one of those, uh, technicians. So we're working with Human Resources to make sure that gets posted and filled as quickly as possible. Uh, received and closed out approximately nine hundred and ninety work orders. Um, we're hoping with MGO that y'all recently approved for us that, uh, our work orders will be far more accurate and we'll be able to provide you with, uh, much more concrete, uh, information and, and, uh, and resolutions on that. Uh, ninety-eight percent signal operational readiness and ninety-four percent flasher operational readiness. The Utilities Division, under Superintendent Joel Doherty. Uh, we currently have, uh, two vacancies in the crewier positions and one vacant maintenance worker position. Uh, you'll see on the left or on the right, excuse me, there's a, we brought in three hundred and twenty-eight point five million gallons of water from Dallas Water Utilities. Uh, we pumped out two hundred and fifty-four point two million gallons of water. Uh, that's an assumed loss of twelve point four million gallons, which is a combination of, uh, water leaks, um, flushing, proactive, uh, flushing and stuff like that. Uh, we repaired twenty-five water main breaks, three wastewater laterals have been replaced. Uh, we cleaned twenty-two thousand six hundred and fifty feet of wastewater line, and we replaced, uh, two fire hydrants. So these next few slides I wanna walk, walk you through, uh, this is meant to be, um, transparent and educational. Uh, this is information from our water loss audit that we just completed. They're due every year in May. And I wanna start bringing these back to you so that every year about this time, we can look at these and, and look at what our system's really doing. Uh, so walking through these, uh, these bullets, so I'm assuming that our, uh, average customer meter accuracy across the city, I'm just plugging in ninety-five percent. We don't have any measures or any way of testing our meters, uh, internally. So, um, I'm just assuming a ninety-five percent accuracy rate. At that accuracy, we can, we can show a total apparent loss at the meter of seventy-four thou, seventy-four million point eight, seventy-four point eight million gallons of water across the city at that accuracy, right? So that comes to half a million dollars in revenue. That's what we know at the meter. Now let's go down. The total real loss of combination of leaks and unknown loss is four hundred and forty-eight million gallons. So that cost us as a utility division one point four million dollars. So that's, that's not revenue, that's, that's what we're spending, and that has a total financial impact of one point nine million dollars. So the estimated total revenue lost at that rate, looking at all of that, has a potential revenue of three point five million dollars. Our gallons per capita per day loss is thirty-five gallons. That's total loss in gallons divided by population divided by three hundred days a year. That's basically meaning every, all forty thousand residents are pouring thirty-five gallons of water out.
Mr. Bryant, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Interject. Um, i- it doesn't seem that long ago when we were talking about, um, the process of identifying some locations of water leaks using the technology.
Coming up.
Okay, so, but let me ask you, 'cause we were talking about ten million gallon, gallons at that time, uh, estimated loss. So what am I disconnecting with here with, with apparent losses? And back on page ninety-two, that number was, uh, quite a bit lower than this.
This, this, you talking about the twelve million?
Uh, yes.
That's within, that's within one quarter.
Okay, got you, got you, okay, all right.
This is, this is, this is all, this is the calendar year of twenty-twenty-four.
Got you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And this is the exact same information, just calendar year twenty-twenty-three. So the difference is, I did an assumption in twenty-twenty-three of a ninety-eight percent meter accuracy. So the revenues look a little bit better, um, the loss is a little bit less, uh, so the total financial impact is a little bit better. Um, but I just wanted to show you this for calendar year twenty-twenty-three. It's all the same information, it's just, again. It's all the same information, it's just, again, for educational purposes and to be transparent about what financially, what that looks like and what y'all probably haven't seen before. So Mayor, to your question, so this is a, this is a snapshot of the Astera USA, the company that y'all approved for us to do satellite leak detection. So over on the left, you'll see they've identified 62 areas of interest, which is leaks coming from our infrastructure. The two scans that were completed, one was on March 18th, one was on May 7th. So the next steps is we will schedule what they refer to as boots-on-the-ground acoustic leak detection methods by field personnel that are subcontracted by that company. I had a meeting with them this morning. That subcontracted personnel will be in Duncanville June 23rd, and they plan to have everything identified as much as they can by, before July 3rd. And, and then after, once that's completed, then Duncanville staff will be dispatched to go excavate and replace or repair all of those leaks.
And I'm sorry, I may have missed this. What, what is the difference between the yellow and the orange?
Great question. So I was, I didn't know if you would actually be able to see that. So everything that's yellow is an area of interest. Everything that's orange means they detected it on both scans, which means it is almost certainty a leak, certainly a leak. And that, and there was 42 of those, per the conversation I had with them this morning. So it's a combination of our infrastructure suffering and our water meters are likely inaccurate. So we're getting hit from both ends, for sure.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Now that actually, any questions besides that before we go into the next one?
Sounds like you got your work cut out.
Well, so I'm going to start off the grant application update with the money we're asking for to fix these problems. So just some introductions, we're going to just introduce, introduce you to some of the things that Shahad and I have been working on. Going to start with some water utilities grants that I've, I've been working with, ongoing grant applications for infrastructure upgrades and compliance projects, and then I'll turn it over to Shahad. Shahad, well, she will go over some streets and transportation grants that she's working on. So just wanted to provide you with overview and, of active and planned grant application efforts by the Public Works Department, and highlight how these efforts to support the city's infrastructure priorities and strategic investments in water, transportation, and mobility projects, and then share some recent accomplishments and funding awards. So I've been working with members of MRB Group and Texas Water Development Board on the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund for water main improvements, elevated storage tank improvements, water pump station improvements, and the AMI water meter replacement, which would be a citywide conversion, as well as the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. So those are two different state revolving fund sources, grant sources, in order to achieve funding for wastewater collection system improvements. The benefits of that is below-market fixed interest rates, up to 30-year repayment period, and up to 70% principal forgiveness. So the water main improvements that I'm working with, working on, so the blue segments that you see there is essentially are what we call the transfer, transmission lines. So those typically run pump station to pump station, water tower to water tower, and those are the main feeders throughout Duncanville, the primary feeders. So current place pipe technology is, is not nothing new. It's been used in the wastewater industry for a long, long time. It's, it's, for lack of a better term, it's insulating an existing pipe. You take, you take a liner and you put it inside the pipe, and then you expand it with steam, and it hardens, and it basically becomes brand-new pipe. And it, it lasts as long as PVC. So it's very tried and true, very reliable, and there's no open cut, it's very minimal footprint when it comes to excavations and interruption of streets. So it's something that we'd like to look into for our, our main lines throughout Duncanville just because the last thing we want to do is, is open cut 20-inch and 18-inch water mains down Wheatland Road in Daniel Dell. So we have a projection of $31 million in repair or in, in improvements for that, that we're asking for from Texas Water Development Board. On the elevated storage tanks, just to kind of get caught up, because we, we have some rehabilitations that we're a little bit behind that I'd like to get ahead of. So on, on the left picture, that's River Oaks Elevated, and you'll see the door there, the door was fabricated when the tank was built by simply cutting a square out of the stamp pipe and welding hinges on. So every year during the winter time, we're frantically trying to do everything we can to insulate it and protect the inside electrical components and telemetry from freezing because air, and that door faces the north, so the cold north wind just runs right through that tower. So on top of rehabilitating that tank, fabricating a proper entryway that would, you know, protect it would go a long way. On the right, that is all homemade wooden shelves and storage units that were all built by Utilities Personnel that far predate me. I would actually like to remove all of that, look at some steel mezzanine structures. That whole tower right there is actually one-inch steel. That could potentially be a great alternate work area slash, you know, EOC something. There's a lot of opportunity inside that tower. So I'd like to for sure rehabilitate that and see what we could accomplish there with a projection of $5 million for both of those. Our pump stations have been kind of put on the back burner for many, many years, so I'd like to get caught up on the rehabilitation of, of all of our pump houses. As you can see, they've, none of them have really been upgraded significantly or rehabilitated since they were built. This, these two pump stations, we're looking at is Summit Pump Station, which was built around 85, and I think Daniel Dell in the bottom right, I believe that was constructed around 80, close to the same time, 85, 87, something like that. So we're asking for approximately $8.4 million to rehabilitate all of our pump houses throughout the city.
Matt, on the lower right-hand picture, is that a water leak or was somebody working on that recently?
That is the mechanical seals of the pump when it operates. So basically the packing around that pump needs to be fixed whenever it works. When it doesn't, when it's not running, it doesn't leak. And then, as we've talked before, AMI water meter replacement. So we're assuming a 25% meter box replacement. We're also assuming a 100% meter box lid replacement because we know the current lids we have on all of our meter boxes are not compatible with the AMI technology. That taken into consideration, plus the cost of meters, we're requesting a $24.6 million grant for that. Lastly, the wastewater collection system. So some of you are familiar with Cheryl Lift Station. It's the only lift station we have in Duncanville. It was engineered to support four houses. It currently only serves one. We believe that if we were to install new sewer line, upsize it and take it, replace everything that's in that alleyway north of Cheryl and take it down, I believe that's Delaunora, cross underneath Camp Wisdom and tie it into that alleyway that's just behind the Laurinwood Nursing Home. I was actually the inspector when they laid that new sewer main, so we've done a lot of the preliminary work to know for sure that if we laid new sewer main, upsized it, that we could actually do away with Cheryl Lift Station and be a zero lift station city, which really excites me.
To your point that it only serves at the upper left-hand corner of the house with the swimming pool on the corner of Cheryl and Hill City, is that correct?
Yeah, if you're looking at Cheryl Boulevard, the house on the, the north side of it, yeah. The northeast corner of Hill City and Cheryl.
Right, and that's a double pump that you have to continually do maintenance on?
Yeah, it's, it's a little grinder pump. It's a one horsepower grinder pump, and yeah, that's currently the only house it serves. But the well itself is, was engineered to support all four of those houses. The other three just never signed on the city sewer. So we're asking for $2 million for those improvements. And with that, I will let Ms. Mohammed walk you through streets and transportation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. So this is Shahad Mohammed, Assistant Director of Public Works, and today I'll be walking us through the opportunities that we are seeking for grants related to the streets and transportation, and some of the awards that we can, that we have recently got awarded. Now, this is really upcoming grants opportunities related to streets and transportation and that we are seeking and working on applications for. To start with is what we have previously discussed, we're seeking the Texas Transportation Alternative, the Texas Transportation Alternative, and on that one, we have been seeking two different projects or submitted two different projects, which is the Duncanville Downtown Connector and the Duncanville Daniel Elementary Safe House School. On the other program, which is under Texas DOT as well, it is the Highway Safety Improvement Program, and we have submitted a grant application for Wheatland Road Intersections Upgrade. For Texas DOT SS4A or the Safe Streets for All Program, we are working on a multi-module policy and prioritization or a transportation and mobility master plan. Under the NCT COG, we have been working with COG on submitting the Cedar Ridge Corridor Reconstruction, the Main Street in Camp Wisdom, intersections reconstruction, and regrading as well as the Duncanville Work Zone Updates Project under their Work Zone Safety Program. So to dig a little bit deeper into those applications and some information about it, we have previously came to Council and talked more specifically about the Texas TA Program, so you're more familiar with these projects that we just got a consent today to submit the application. The due date on this application is June 20th, and I do have some, to strengthen our application, we really have been seeking letters of support from City of Duncanville residents and City of Duncanville Council. So I do have some of those physical letters of support drafts that we created, so I'll, I'll definitely keep that with the City Manager here, and if anybody in attendance that is one and a resident of the City of Duncanville that wants to support the program, they can just sign it and return it to us, and we will attach that to the application. We have been working on these applications with multiple entities, so we've been working with BNSF and we're coordinating with them. We'll get a, a letter of support from them. We've been working with the Duncanville ISD, and there was one update that I wanted to make here, that in the previous presentation, you saw the name Smith Elementary, and here you see Daniel Elementary. And that's the same, really same location, same project. The thing is, we got an update from the ISD that the Smith Elementary is turning into an, an early education center, and Daniel, currently Daniel Intermediate School is turning into a Daniel Elementary, and that's going to be the main elementary school, which is really next to it, just adjacent, adjacent to that building. So would not really impact the scope of work, but majorly. So we had changed the name of the project into Daniel Elementary, and we have coordinated that with Texas DOT as well. This is a 0% match or 100% reimbursement opportunity. As we talked before, we should know about the award by the fall of 2025. And here is some of the maps that we have shared previously of the location and the scope of these proposed projects. Now, the next opportunity that we are seeking is under the Texas SS4A or the Safe Streets for All Program. Under that one, we are working on a transportation, we are working on really a mobility and transportation.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Coons has a question.
Yeah.
Sorry, my apologies. I didn't want you to get too far along before. If you don't mind going back, I guess, two or three slides right there. So it's 100% reimbursable. Funding needed, two to three months' worth of available funds for reimbursement process. I guess my, my question is, how much would the city have already committed to funding the project as, while we're making the application?
While doing the application, you're, you're saying?
Right.
So the city at this point does not, will not be required, the City of Duncanville, based on its, you know, demographics. It is eligible for 100% reimbursement. So we, the city will not need to fund the project, however, the work, it's the way it's usually done, the work is going to be done, we're going to pay for it, and we're going to get reimbursed in two to three months. So the process takes about two to three months to be able to report those invoices to Texas DOT and get that reimbursed. So the city will need at the time when we know we're awarded, so we're talking about fall, if we knew that we are awarded fall of 2025, then Texas DOT will require to form our advanced funding agreement, the AFA, we will need to present that the city is capable of achieving two to three months' worth of work. So you're talking about depending on the really estimate of the total project. It starts slow with the design, it's like about 15% of the total estimate that you see here for some of these projects. It's like, one of the projects is 8 million, 8.6, and the other is 12 or, or 15.9 million. So it really depends on the project we get awarded to and its cost. Design is 15%, two to three months, we're talking about $400,000 as a rough estimate, basically, to be presented by the city as a capability to afford and then get reimbursed back in two to three months.
No, no, she answered. Yes, sir. Yeah. Thank you.
So the next opportunity here is really more of a planning opportunity that we are seeking. This is really the last, the, the second before last round of Texas SS4A. So with that said, we've been told that there is a lot of opportunities for planning funds because a lot of these cities have already applied for planning, and now they are seeking more execution funds. So it is a separate, two separate parts of funds that we are ambitious about getting awarded for with, we are looking to have a comprehensive transportation and mobility plan under that funds, leveraging multiple of those different master plans that we are looking to achieve and multiple of the city goals in one big plan where it really overlays everything together to create prioritization for projects. So this, this plan that we're submitting for should include a transportation safety action plan, a city, a citywide ADA transition plan, and as well as a general mobility and pedestrian bike master plan. And this, by coordinating with our Parks Team, we know that the city's opportunities really for bikes, pedestrian, really trails is really mostly on our, on the roadway network. So with that, this is really a good opportunity to leverage it in the same planning efforts that we are doing, looking at the streets in general, looking at potential complete streets, we talked about it, looking at, at the transportation strategic planning for the city overall at once, and creating priority list of projects for this, that would be the most meaningful to the city to address multiple goals. This project currently estimated to be a 1.23 million dollars in total if we get awarded, and the match, the city has to present a 20% match, which is estimated to be 244 something, which is about $245,000, it says here. We will be, it's due for submission on the 26th. We do have letters of support for We do have letters of support for that as well. So, that, you're going to see two letters of support for two different grants and programs with Tech Dot. And on that one, we are anticipating to know about the award about the same time, which is the fall of 2025, and funding will be eligible for '27 through '28. So, next up, and the next one is COG. We've talked about working on some grant applications with COG. So, one of the grant applications with COG originally, the thought process behind it was focusing on doing the Cedar Ridge section. And I'll go to this one while we're talking because I want to show you on the map. We have talked about Cedar Ridge being, we've done a corridor study on Cedar Ridge to look at the needs and where to focus on Cedar Ridge, as you all have been briefed before. And the selection on the original Cedar Ridge's scope, given the bond, 2018 bond, was the section in red. Now, after the corridor study and the recommendation, it was also decided by Council at the time that the scope be changed into a more important or more meaningful section to address in Cedar Ridge, which is decided to be the green area and which is Middale to Camp Wisdom by the Duncanville High School. Now, this section of the work is this 100%, at 100% design, and we are ready to bid out for work. Now, the reason why we stalled a little bit on issuing the work out for bid was our coordinations with COG, because the goal originally was to see if we were able to submit the whole corridor and account for this piece of work and the available budget to do it, to basically do our 20% match. However, the responses we got from COG is that that can't be done. So, we will have to really proceed with Cedar Ridge, which is something we're going to be talking about in the future and coming with you regarding the bid of that item or of that project. But aside from that, we really still pursued addressing Cedar Ridge in general with COG and we are still seeking a grant application to do the rest of the Cedar Ridge as it still needs to be addressed and it was recommended by COG to submit for the rest of the project. Now, the other project here that we submitted with COG is the Main Street and Camp Wisdom Road, and that is an intersection that we know have a great issue for the, for the railroad.
Another question from Mr. Coons.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. So, with the Cedar Ridge Road Project, and this probably, I guess I can ask, oh, City Attorney's not here, so I can ask anything. But is, are there any discussions with the Bond Committee on any additional funding to complete the projects that were planned in 2017?
So, we actually had a meeting last night and we're really starting to that, get to that point where we're rolling up our sleeves and digging into it. So, we had conversations about this specific intersection, but the Cedar Ridge, I think that that was, we didn't discuss that, but that was previously budgeted, correct?
Right. We did not discuss that because the budget is available to do that section of the project. Not the whole corridor, but that section that was identified in the bond program or after the bond program is to be addressed. So, yeah, that's available in the budget. We don't need to provide, you know, additional funds to address it. But on this intersection, we have talked about it yesterday, as Mr. Finch has just mentioned, because this one is still short. So, we do have $1.5 million under the previous bond funds for this project, while current estimates, as the scope looks like now with, in the picture, is an almost over $7 million in total. So, that is a big adjustment to make. And we, and as a result, we have submitted this to COG as a grant application, hoping that the 1.5 million available can be leveraged as the city's 20% match if this project gets elected and get awarded. But we were informed that this takes like two to three years, at least, because we're on a queue, basically waiting on funds and competing with other cities.
Shahad, just to summarize, so, we're good to essentially go on Cedar Ridge. That's moving forward. But we're five to six million dollars short for completing this project as it was described in the 2018 bond for this main at Camp Wisdom.
So, the good news, we have already awarded some of these grant opportunities that we have been seeking. So, the first one is Tech Dot SS4HSIP. So, we talked about the Highway Safety Improvement Program with Tech Dot. We have submitted a project and those, under small-scale projects, which is the improvements to Wheatland Road Intersections. And on that one, we, the project estimate was $568,000. We have presented a match of $110,000. And with that, we can, we will be able to achieve traffic and pedestrian signals upgrades, retroactive signals and ADA ramps, and crosswalks and push buttons upgrades, all of those traffic signal elements. This is really waiting on an AFA agreement from Tech Dot that we're in the process of working on, and it is anticipated to kick off in 2027. And the funding is needed to be secured for this round of the budget that we're working on, the FY 2026, to be able to accept the rest of the funds. And this is the project map. So, it is addressing nine intersections on the Wheatland Road stretch from Clark Road into Cockerell Road. Next award is the NCT COG Work Zone Safety Program. We were on the top of the list, awarded the top qualified city for this program. It's going to be a project over $219,000 and the city match, there is no city match required. This is 100% reimbursable project. And for this one, we will be implementing a new technology called NewGov. And that's really a platform that's going to be used by multiple Public Works divisions like Traffic Operations, Streets, Utilities, and other groups, and any group that is doing work on this Duncanville roadway networks. We, to include other entities, the platform will provide a clear and digitalized work zone process, capture closures throughout the city. It's going to show some information about ongoing projects that is interactive with public. It can suggest alternative roads, routes to take on the, on your ride if you're driving on those streets that has work. And it's going to be basically an interactive map to communicate and have transparency with residents about projects and work that is ongoing in the city. And we'll be able to provide also input on finding a pothole as you're driving, and you're going to be able to communicate that back to us through it too. The status of this project is also working on inter-local agreement with COG that we're drafting right now for award. And this is in some pictures of how it's going to look like when we have this interactive maps for roadway closures, going to be added to the maps that we have. And it's going to show where the closure is occurring in the city, and it can also coordinate like Tech Dot, any other entities that are working on the Duncanville area as well and have information, lifetime, information on closures, end of closures, ongoing projects, potholes, things like that. And at the end, really, this is, what we're looking ahead is really achieving some of these, more of these grants, and we're going to, we're committed to continuing to seeking opportunities for alternative sources of funds to help the infrastructure and the growth of the City of Duncanville. And we thank you for your support. And I'll leave the letters of support for those applications with Mr. Finch for signature. Thank you.
So, the total of the two, I think what you phrased as good news awards on page 117, screen 117 and 118.
Yes.
What was that total amount? So, you got 568.
568 and 219. So, a total of almost $800,000?
Very good. That is good news.
Yeah.
Thank you for finding.
Good start.
Yeah, it is. It is. Thank you. Mr. McNabb Burnett?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. To our Public Works Team, I'm so excited to see this. This has been a long time kind of coming, and we hadn't seen it in a few years. And to see this and to see that you are going out and actively doing that and even trying to do things, because I think, at least I know, Mr. Bryant is, I've been trying to push AMI for a number of years. And granted, I can hold off if you're saying it's going to get paid for this way, right? But I'm so pleased to see this because it's so important. Water is such a big asset for the city and to get that situation taken care of and to see all this and all the work that's going in and paying off is just exciting. Thank you.
I've got another question up, but I want to, especially in the absence of our City Attorney. I don't want to cross the line on a citizen input question, so I'm not going there. But I will say that when we're describing street maintenance, utilities, a number of things that you're describing here, does any of this address any issues we might have in these areas that could pertain to ADA issues, especially the technology side that is what gives people audible alerts when they're crossing? Are we going to be able to update any of that and get it?
Well, the Wheatland Road upgrades that we're talking about, the Highway Safety Improvement, that one will do that on all of the Wheatland Road intersections. So, on this one, that's a safety, that's a specific safety improvement. So, it's going to be doing all of these upgrades. Now, some of these concerns that was shared is really coming from an aging infrastructure, a case of like these push buttons are just going out of life or being, and then we have, we're short on really the funds of renewing those all at once. So, we're working a little by little, basically. So, that's really the case of where it stands today. But we are having that in mind because, based on that specific resident that just complained, we know that she always crosses by Wheatland Road. So, in fact, one of the prioritization factors we had when we talked about best road to submit the application for, talking to our superintendent in traffic, that her situation in specific was mentioned and we considered and looking at selection of the street.
And I'm going way out left field. Does any of this address the issues that our first responders have with lack of ability to control the signal lights when they're going through?
Right.
I understand that maybe there's some.
Not any of this one. We are, not any of these specific, you know, grant applications we mentioned, but there potentially could be grant applications to seek. We're going to be in the lookout for any possible opportunities because those are on the top of the priority projects that we have mentioned and we have submitted to really consider as the preemption, which is the system for the emergency response, as well as the push button and the school flashers, which are all safety concerns.
Is everybody familiar with what it is I'm talking about? Okay. So, yeah, as long as that, somewhere down the road, that gets addressed because I know it's probably aging technology that we have that isn't coordinating with the traffic signals. So, that'll be a topic for another day. So, thank you. Mr. Coons.
Thank you, Mayor. Is the NewGov, is Tech Dot, are they currently using that software?
That's a COG.
Okay.
That's a COG. And NewGov is a COG, and this, this basically program is COG initiative. And yeah, it is in collaboration with NewGov to do that, but that's going to be regional because yes, Tech Dot is using NewGov. So, we're going to be able to have this configuration within the system to connect Tech Dot data with us to know if Tech Dot is working on our streets, and that is updated as well on our maps.
Yeah. And the reason why I ask is because I've used NewGov on Tech Dot. Someone had asked about a construction project on 67.
Yeah.
Somehow we stumbled upon it, and it is, it's a great tool. And a lot of times people ask, well, what kind of work are they doing on that street or what are they doing over there? Sometimes I say, I don't know. But this will be a great tool, especially, I mean, I'm excited, as Mr. McNabb Burnett said, all these projects, I'm going to just keep my fingers crossed that we're going to get approval for some of the, you know, some of these grants. And so, there's going to be a lot of work being done on our streets and infrastructure, and I think that this tool is going to be, come in handy. So, thank you.
You're doing the actual grant writing?
We're getting some support on the grant writing by different grant writers, consultants. But on some of these, like for this one, specifically the Work Zone, we had help from consultants that was hired by COG. So, COG had consultants. We just had to work with them as a city to help us do the best applications because COG had the support already provided to the cities through some of their consent that was built to Tech Dot. But on the other applications, we're working with different consultants mentioned here, Kimley Horn or MRB Group with water mainly and the Tech Dot TA.
That's outstanding. Thank you. Any other questions, Council? Does that complete your presentation?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Nothing else? Well done. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we're going to recess from our regular session at 8:58 PM. Okay, so we're going to recess from our regular session at eight fifty-eight PM.
Reopening our regular session at 10:01 PM.
Mayors reopen the executive session and all action is needed, necessary or requested.
Agreed. And with that, if there's no further than this, we will stand adjourned at 10:02 PM. Thank you all very much.